Restricting certain flight patterns and above ground levels for these helicopters. That's all this is, is just for reference purposes. The area of the Thompson residence is in this general location here. This is a typical Paradise Helicopter flight path. You'll see here on the bottom of the map where it mentions Jack's place, that's Jack Thompson. And again, as they were mentioning, you come from Hilo Airport. You would go up to Pu'oe then to the residence or the subject property. It looks like they go to Kalapana and then back up to the airport. The planning director is recommending approval with conditions. If I can bring to your attention several correspondence that have been submitted since the background has been submitted to the planning commission. Number one, we've received a petition for standing in a contested case hearing. This was submitted by the Hawaii Volcanoes National Park Service. We have, this was received January 2nd. We've also received a letter from John Karst and this was received January 7th. You should have gotten a copy of that. It has several letters included in the correspondence. We have a recent middle of the response letters from Paradise Helicopters to the National Park as well as Bob Ernst. And the reason why I say recent middle is the same correspondence is also within your background, the background report under exhibit 12. We've submitted to you the recommendation report which is in yellow. And lastly, this morning, we have received a letter from Corey Harden and that should be in your possession. Just to bring to your attention some conditions of approval. Within your background report, you'll, you'll see the phrase "air tour management plan." And this is a plan that has been being worked on by the National Park for a period of time. At this time, it is not finalized. They're still going through the environmental impact statement as well as finalizing the plan. What the planning department has put in the conditions under condition number four is that at such time that an air tour management plan is adopted by the Hawaii Volcanoes National Park, that the applicant will be required to comply with the requirements of that plan. If the plan states that there shall be no landing within that half mile above area, then at that point, it states that the special permit is not required. If there are restrictions placed on the plan within that half mile acre area, then the applicant will need to comply with those restrictions. Additionally, condition three, we've required the applicant to submit a survey of the landing area, the 10,000 square foot landing area. And the reason for that is because obviously, it may be difficult to identify the exact location if there is lava activity in this area. Right now, there are certain features that can identify the property, but in the future, those features may be gone. And we're asking that each time this area is inundated, that they resubmit and re-mark this area. With that, is there any ready to answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darrow. Okay, fellow commissioners, what we're gonna be doing at this time is since that letter dated January 2nd, 2013, we have a request to intervene for the contested case and need to see if they have, if they're gonna get, if we're gonna grant them standing. Okay, so right now, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call the petitioner to the table. Petitioner?
Oh, you or me?
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. First, first we'll have the applicant make a brief presentation and then after that, we'll, we'll have the petitioner. And we do have one person who testified, is Corey Harden. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna go through this first and then you can testify. Okay, reminder now for anybody else here who is, does wanna testify for next items that are on the agenda, you have three minutes to testify. And we do have another item, item number six, which is connections. If there is anybody here for connections, reminder, three minutes. Okay, so go ahead. I'll please state your name, or maybe I'll swear both of you guys at the same time. Do you swear, please raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Hawaii County Planning Commission?
I do.
Okay, please state your name and where you reside, if you'd like.
My name is Greg Morris, I'm a planning consultant for the applicant Paradise Helicopters Planters, Q box 1101 Commonwealth, 96743.
My name is Rob Piesco, I'm the Director of Business Development for Paradise Helicopters and I reside at 75 DS 682, May-a-Lanaki Place in Cometha.
We have received a background report recommendation. Appreciate the diligence the planning department's taken to review this matter and appreciate their support, not only granting a finding of no significant impact on the environmental assessment, but also recommending approval with these stated conditions. The applicant is willing to accept these conditions as stated. After you consider the matter of standing, I would like to make a comment at that time about standing and about the process, unless you'd like me to do that now.
Yes, since you're already up at the table, you can go ahead and do it.
All right. The applicant does not have an objective to grant standing to the petitioner. Obviously, you did advise that the standard for establishing standing in contested cases is determined very closely and there's no reason for us not to support this. As you're aware, contested cases can be very time consuming and extremely expensive. In most cases, when a contested case is filed, we try to reach out to the petitioner to see if we can negotiate some sort of agreement as to mitigate any concerns that they may have. Our efforts in this case have not been successful. In most cases, because contested cases are expensive, there is motivation. In the case of the National Park Service, they have no concern about cost of legal fees because those fees are paid by our tax dollars. It's, there is an advantage obviously of a contested case. And one of the things that we look forward to is an opportunity to cross-examine witnesses because often in cases as you have seen, representations are made or statements are made that maybe somewhat outrageous or overstated. But in a contested case, you have an opportunity to cross-examine witnesses to make sure that they can substantiate any claims that are made. In this case, we're particularly interested to discuss the proposed impacts to recreational users of the park. This is an extremely remote area of the park. Mr. Thompson, who resided on the property for over 30 years, never saw a visitor on the National Park Service side of this area. There's also been some allegations that the impacts to relic forests, endangered species. I think you've seen the recent photographs, there is no forest anymore. There's no habitat for endangered species at this time. It's a barren lot of field. And I'll be particularly interested to see how the National Park Service can justify their statement in their application, their request for contested case that they are in fact the native Hawaiian, which I don't know how that could be proven, as a proof. But anyway, that, we do look forward to that opportunity to cross-examine the park and their witnesses on these issues. Ultimately, the applicant will have to determine if the expense and the time involved will be justified to challenge these claims, particularly after the planning department has issued a finding of no significant impact on the EPA and has recommended approval of the conditions. But that would be a decision for the applicant to make. Any questions, commissioners?
Any questions for that?
We would like to reserve the opportunity for Mr. Piesco to respond to any of the comments that may be made in public. Would that be possible? Would we come back at that time on a little public comment?
If we knew, we should hear instead we knew all that, that the national park, that we're gonna do this.
Just make some brief comments now.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So I wanna thank everyone for their concerns and the letters and we responded individually, though I just received Corey Harden's letter this morning, so we will get an official response to her concerns as well. Overwhelmingly, the concerns are about increase of tours, increase of noise, noise, and danger to that immediate environment. We will not be changing any of our flight paths. It'll be existing flight paths, so there will be no additional traffic. If anything, helicopters will be on the ground and not in the air, it's gonna be less than traffic. What we wanna do is support the Hawaii tourists here and create an event where people are not only flown over the National Park, but get access to tie themselves to the land by getting the land in a spot and giving these unique experiences that drive the tourist business here, which based on Hawaiian News's lead cover story for the January issue, is what is helping survive Hawaii's economy and also helping distinguish the Big Island in particular. Obviously, we're concerned about the community, we're part of the community. We employ 60 people here, mostly on the Big Island. We're very much involved in community aspects, donating to first responders, putting our time in actually performing the rescue for Mr. Thompson. By the way, there is Mr. Thompson who is a resident of that community, whose house has been wiped out and this is an opportunity provides just for some income for him as well. So appreciate everyone's comments and appreciate the consideration of the council. Thank you.
I have a question. I noticed in Ms. Harden's letter, her letter saying she emphasized safe. Do you have any safety plans or safety implementation for your clients as well as employees at the site?
Yeah, obviously, we're gonna comply or exceed any regulations that are imposed, but we employ SMS, a safety management system. Any landings, any activity we do goes through a guard model of green, amber, red, where we identify what are the processes, what are the dangers, what is the level of potential hazard from each of these things and it's written on the green, amber, or red. Green obviously means it's okay, amber is caution and that means action must be taken to correct and make sure that that safety is there.
Okay, any questions, commissioners, or the advocate?
Go on.
Commissioner Ishashi?
Thank you. Community, I'll read, community meeting, do you have any regards?
I can probably let our older county speaker usually attends community meetings. In regards to this, we're certainly open to any contact from the community. Whenever we receive letters, concerns, calls about overflights, which you know, aren't always ours, we're happy to respond and have always had an open door in regards to the community.
Okay, I'm sorry. The concern by this John Karst, he had a series of questions that I was not able to comprehend in terms of response by, by you. His concern, were they individually addressed?
If you wanna reference the response letter, we felt that we addressed, there was certainly some questions that were outside the scope of this permit, so we didn't feel need to respond specifically to those, so we did try to address all his concerns. That related to this matter?
Okay, fellow commissioners, we do have a pending contested case, so prior to getting into that application, what we should do is we should take care of the contested case first. So at this point, I'll have the petitioners, please come to the table. Can you raise your right hand and swear again? Do you swear and affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Hawaii County Planning Commission? Okay, please state your name and where you reside.
Cindy Orlando, I'm the superintendent.
Oh, please speak in the microphone.
Cindy Orlando, I'm the superintendent of Hawaii Volcanoes National Park. I reside at 946521 Ma'o Road in Waipiki. Mahalo for considering our request to be a party for standing in this contested case hearing for special permit application 12-143. As you have heard and as you know, the National Park Service has diligently participated in this particular planning process that would allow the establishment of a helicopter landing adjacent to the park boundary. We have commented on the environmental assessment very early on back in November of 2011. We have commented during scoping with a letter dated November 21st, 2011, and then on the draft environmental assessment we settled in a letter dated March 27th, 2012. In that letter, we also requested that the consultant reach out to the Kalapana Fishing Council and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Most recently, you have our comments on the special permit application and we note specifically that that particular application that was submitted contains outdated and inaccurate information regarding existing conditions and the impacts of the proposed activity. That letter also summarizes yet again our concerns and resource impacts that we believe are relevant to this proposal. We believe that we clearly have unique interests that are distinguishable in this matter from that of the general public. The National Park Service is required by law, and I'm not gonna go into all the legal citations, but I certainly have those four words beneath them, I think they are. We are required by law under our enabling legislation to encourage adjacent compatible land uses to avoid or mitigate potential adverse effects that may occur in national park units. Unlike the general public or even any other federal agency, the National Park Service is responsible for protecting and preventing impacts to natural and cultural resources in park units as well as visitor enjoyment. The National Park Service Organic Act, the law of 1916 requires that we, and I quote, "conserve the scenery and the natural and historic objects and the wildlife therein and to provide for the enjoyment of the same in such manner and by such means as will leave them unimpaired for the enjoyment of future generations," end quote. Additionally, in 2000, Congress determined that noise from commercial air tours can cause significant impacts to national parks and passed the National Parks Air Tour Management Act. That act was sponsored by Senator Iacaca. This statute acts to protect park resources and visitor experience by preventing significant adverse impacts from air tour noise. As you have heard from the applicant, we are developing through an EIS process, environmental impact statement pursuant to this law, the Air Tour Management Act and the Air Tour Management Plan, and that was already indicated that the current level of air tour noise is already causing impacts to the national park. The biggest issue is that the proposed landing area will set a precedent that is likely to result in even greater long-term adverse noise, visual impacts to the park. The acoustic environment, or the sound, has been identified as a natural and cultural resource, a resource subject to all the protections under the 1916 law. Furthermore, the PATMO law, the Air Tour Management Act, and under that law, we share jurisdictions with the Federal Aviation Administration over all commercial air tour activity within one half mile of national park boundaries. Lastly, the 1938 Kalapana Extension Act added 42,000 acres of land to the park and we have specific legislative provisions to direct us to allow native Hawaiians to practice those rights which are customarily and traditionally exercised for subsistence, cultural, or religious purposes. We manage the Kalapana Extension in accordance to a federal law. This area includes a major portion of the park that is adjacent to our proposed special permit area. We appreciate the opportunity this morning to comment and we look forward to your faithful consideration of this request.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Or questioner?
What do you anticipate this air tour management plan being finished?
You know, we've been working, we've been working on it now for about six years diligently and we are a cooperator in that EIS process. The FAA is the lead agency. It's really being managed out of Washington DC. We are developing our draft alternatives as we speak and I think you saw a map that was presented, that is not as, as was mentioned, the final map, but it was in some of our draft plans. We had a number of contributor on that, I think lots of comments.
So it's gonna take years, you think it is?
It has taken years. We're proceeding to develop our alternatives. It could take, but it's out of our hands because we are a cooperator, not a lead agency.
Thank you. Any further questions for the petitioner? Commissioner Ono?
Could you further elaborate that statement? My understanding is that the petition would be that Paradise Helicopters would develop the landing pad and based upon the studies that you're gonna be doing, that they'd be willing to comply with it. We don't have the timetable for that, so my concern is, what do you think about allowing them to develop the landing pad now and when the directive is completed, that they understand that they have to remove the landing pad, if it affects them or it affects the map more?
We have held public meetings on our planning process and we have not had the public supportive of any kind of landing pads adjacent to the park.
My question is, with the National Park change in possible environmental studies that was addressed earlier, they'd be willing to remove the landing pad based upon the decision of the National Park? My understanding, this is the regulation by the petitioner, so would you, because I'm concerned about the timetable that was being addressed earlier, if it's gonna take five years, at least they have use of the landing pad in five years. Whatever the timetable may be, or even if it's six months, they'd be willing to test that, my understanding. So is there any objection to that?
Yes, there is objection by the National Park Service and we look forward to discussing that in the contested case.
Reminder to commissioners, the issue right now is to grant the petitioner standing. It seems like Commissioner Ono is trying, is getting into the application, so first we see if we can grant them standing and then we can move on. So any more questions regarding the contested case for the petitioner? If not, then any questions for staff? And if there's no questions for staff, are you ready to make any more? Motion would be to either grant or deny the petitioner's standing or, or contested case. Okay, keep in mind commissioners, that the applicant is not in, is not up against having a contested case.
I need a motion to grant standing in this case.
One second. Okay, ready for discussion? I'll start it off. Yeah, I think the petitioner has standing, so you know, they fit all the criteria and I'm sure that we have my fellow commissioners. Nobody else to discuss, okay. Commissioner Darrow, ready to make your vote?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The motion before us is to grant standing in a contested case hearing to Hawaii Volcanoes National Park, National Park Service. With that, I'll take the roll call. Commissioner Moses?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ishashi?
Aye.
Commissioner Ono?
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
The motion passes by the seat.
Thank you very much. Okay, so our next idea that we need to do is we need to see if we as a commission will refer to this matter or if we will hear, we will hire a hearing officer. And we're gonna have the planning department hire a hearing officer. So I'm ready to indicate a motion whether we as a commission wanna take care of it or we wanna hire a hearing officer. I have a question. What kind of history do we have of this? What would usually happen in a case like this? That would be a staff question or a constitution? Yeah. Okay, fellow commissioners, what we have here is we have a lot of issues to deal with. The planning department has to see if there's a timeframe, if we do decide to take it upon ourselves, there is a timeframe, we have future applications. Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, just very briefly, this, the decision on whether you are going to hear the contested case yourself or whether you farm it out to a hearings officer, as the chairman was saying, depends on a number of practical considerations. It's an option for you, if you have any discretion. Basically, if it's a fairly simple kind of a case and you feel like we can handle it when you're ready for agenda, then it's in some ways very efficient to do that, then you don't have extra complication of hiring a hearings officer and that report to you, they can come after you, then you have to pick it up and read all the hearings officer's records. So if it's a fairly simple case and you feel you can deal with it, you know, straight up on your own one agenda, then that can be very efficient. But if you feel like the case is, you know, has some complexity, it's gonna take more time and it's really impractical to deal with on your own agenda, if you feel like the, and the staff is informing you that you have a fairly heavy calendar coming up and may not be all that practical for you to hear this, all of the evidence on your own, then it may be a good idea to farm it out to a hearings officer. Also, it kinda depends on how much money you have to pay for this thing, the planning department to come.
Okay, yes, staff, you could please address the money issues while I sit down.
We do have money available for a contested case hearing and it is budgeted. However, we should, we have basically money available to hire a hearing officer. I don't think we need to go into, normally a hearing officer in the past has for a relatively, I guess straightforward issue, it could be in the neighborhood of $20,000. That's kind of like the benchmark that we use. And we do have that amount available to give inside the hearing office.
And as far as timing, how is our future agenda in the next three or four months? Pretty heavy?
Roughly about four to five items. It really depends, but we're looking at about four or five items for the next two weeks we're meeting. So you know, it could be accommodated. Again, it depends on the issues that have been put forth by the National Park, which is quite a few issues and how those, if you target the argument addressed.
Boy, I recommend, I recommend, you might wanna ask the National Park Service how many witnesses they intend to bring and how long the presentation will take. Is this something that they anticipate they're gonna be bringing testimony in and it's gonna take the half a day to present their case? Is it one day to present their case? If that really is a consideration, if you're talking about a few hours, then it's one thing. If you're talking more than one day, then that's something that I would say needs to go to the hearings officer.
Okay, can I have the petitioner come up? Can we answer any further questions?
Obviously, it's difficult for us to answer. Contrary to what was stated earlier, we don't have lawyers at our disposal. I have to get on people's schedule like everybody else, so we would be bringing in subject matter experts from the mainland, logistical experts, sound people, there's a lot going on in that regard. So I would expect it would definitely be more than one day. I couldn't, I have no idea how long it would be, but I would say it would probably be more than one day. Just getting people here from the mainland, all our subject matter experts and solicitors are in the mainland.
Okay, can I have the applicant phone call come aboard, and maybe just give you your opinion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Realistically, I've been involved in a number of these, is that I think this case has several elements, noise, cultural impacts, impacts on native species, impact on relic forests. I suspect this is a good, you know, like, if you have a case.
Commissioners, any questions for that? Thank you very much, and ready to make a motion. We need a motion to refer this matter to a hearings officer.
I make a motion to refer to a hearings officer.
Any second, sorry. Discussion, yeah, this is something that's going to take more than a day, and, you know, for one of us commissioners to act as a hearings officer, I think it would be time-consuming on all of our schedules. And we do have a few items to cover, so, any other discussion? Commissioner Daro, ready for vote?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I did not hear who seconded the motion.
It was Commissioner Ono.
Okay, so the motion before us is to hire a hearings officer. With that, I'll take the roll. Commissioner Moses?
Aye.
Commissioner Ono?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ishibashi?
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Both parties will be notified in writing, so thank you very much. Okay, moving on to applicant number three. And a reminder again, oh, yeah, public testimonials, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't. Please come forward. It's Corey Harden. Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear in a firm to tell the truth in front of the Hawaii County Planning Commission?
Yes.
Do you state your name, where you reside, and you can speak in the microphone?
Corey Harden, box one oh two six five, Van Heel.
You have three minutes.
So I'm speaking about the Paradise Helicopters. First, I want to thank all you commissioners for your service on the commission, and I'm glad that you have granted standing to the Volcano Park. I hope when the permit comes up, that you will deny it. If you grant a permit for this culturally sensitive, remote, quiet area that borders protected land, will there be a rush for similar permits in case the pending air tour management plan does not allow them? Should a permit be given to a company that has a history of unpermitted landings on this site? And how many unpermitted landings were there, and by who? The Star Advertiser said six helicopters parked at the site one day, and three weddings were held, with guests maybe brought in by helicopter. There are other reports, some conflicting, and I hope you can get at the truth. Specific impacts, cultural impacts. The proposed landing site is a new lava landscape. In Hawaiian culture, such landscapes are some of the most sacred places. The general area is associated with the birth of pili honu amea and the creation of Hawaiian culture. Kupuna have stated that they feel the sight and presence of low-flying aircraft is culturally inappropriate. The site is only three hundred feet from the Volcano Park Kalapana Extension, which has been mentioned, where native Hawaiians have legal rights to subsistence, cultural, and religious activities. Noise impacts, natural impact, quiet, has been said is one of the resources of Volcano Park according to law and park policy. And helicopters to shatter this quiet that can be heard for ten to fifteen minutes for five to ten miles on either side of their flight path in the buo'olo area. And if they land and take off, of course, it's a whole lot noisier. Helicopter noise already impacts volcano safety by masking speech and volcanic sounds, and it interferes with data collection and radio use. We all know that helicopter noise has severely impacted people in their homes and in the wilderness for years with little relief in sight. Helicopter noise at the proposed site could also disturb birds, like the endangered eel in the remaining forest. Safety, will the new lava safely support a landing platform? Paradise Helicopters says yes, but there's no details in the environmental assessment how they arrived at that conclusion. Economics, helicopter tours provide jobs, but so do quiet, unspoiled places that attract visitors. Existing plans, the landing site does not follow county and community plans. The county general plan calls for protecting, preserving, and enhancing the quality of areas endowed with natural beauty. The Kuna Community Development Plan calls for keeping areas of scenic and cultural interest accessible to the public in a manner that does not detract from their aesthetic, natural, and cultural value. And data errors, because of errors, the final environmental assessment and permit certification do not provide adequate basis for decision-making. There's errors regarding areas close to visitors and about air tour planning, and some of the maps and photos are from before the lava came in, they're out of date. So I hope you will deny this permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for this part? Okay, moving on to applicant number three. Matt W. Cashill.